That over.
Bring the February tenth, twenty twenty-five work meeting to order. Matt, you want to preside?
Sure. Okay, Mr. Mayor and council members, Brian Mundell is out sick this evening, so he left me a message and said he didn't want to infect everyone, so we are thankful for that. Not that he's sick, but that he's not infecting everyone. I hope he feels better soon. I've got the item, first item on the agenda here is the union contract negotiation process. I did a little research here, I'm just going to pull this up. For some of the estimates that are out there right now, staff put together kind of an idea of twenty-four hours with one hour contingency. We're estimating around two thousand one hundred and fifty-six dollars to negotiate this. Eckberg came in at what they felt would be between fifteen and sixteen thousand dollars for sixty to eighty hours. And then I did get ahold of a gentleman by the name of Scott Lee Pack. He works for Barna Guzzi. He does this exclusively and he wasn't able to even consider the spelt the work, but I said, well, how much would you estimate, you know, for what we're looking for? And his estimate is around five to seven thousand dollars. So this is kind of, this is kind of, I guess, the range, two thousand to twenty thousand. I would say that twenty thousand might be too much. But, you know, I, I bring this up because I know part of the complaint last time was that whatever staff negotiates, you're kind of negotiating your own salary increase, right? I mean, that's kind of, because it usually parlay's into the non-union. And if it's the will of the council for us to do that negotiating, then at least you guys are aware of the fact that we're trying to stay as independent as possible on this. But it's, you know, you'd have to trust in good faith that we're going to negotiate the best possible outcome for the union, and then that would equally probably parlay over to the non-union. So going into it with eyes wide open if you want, if you want staff to do that, so.
Well, personally, my view is staff is negotiating what the council tells the staff to negotiate. So the, we go into closed session, the staff brings to us what the unions have decided they want, and council says, yes, no, no, we're going to go here, we'll go there, we'll, we're not interested at all at that, you don't even bother bringing it back, it's whatever.
Sure.
And then staff goes back and says, this is what the council says, and they'll come back with a counter, and it'll go back and forth a couple of times like that. That's, that's the way, so I don't feel like the staff is negotiating their own salary. I think they are doing the bidding of the council.
Madam Chair, or Mr. Chair and Madam Councilmember, the, that is the exact truth, is we're going to do exactly what you guys want us to do. I can't tell you where or why that was the complaint generated, but I'm just relaying what was conveyed. And so one of the suggestions was, well, we can hire it out. And if we hire it out, this is kind of the range of hire out from what we can determine at this point, so. But we can take a stab at it if you'd like us, we just need direction one way or the other.
I have no problem with what Suzanne is saying. I mean, I think staff can negotiate, but they need to bring it back to us as council, and then we can decide. I think we can do it a lot cheaper than them numbers up there, in my opinion, it's like...
Hear more in this area?
I'm thinking, I mean, when we're looking at, you know, Eckberg-Langmer, fourteen-seven and nineteen-six, it's like, I think we can handle it myself.
Agreed.
This is, this is, twenty-four hours is our estimate, Eckberg-Langmers is sixty to eighty, but at their rate of twenty-four hours, it would be that amount.
Right.
So the question is, how many hours? And how many back and forths, right? I mean, that's, that's the variable. But this kind of gives you an idea, at their dollar rate, if we could do it in twenty-four hours, it would be, you know, more, a little more than twice as much as what staff is estimating. But for whatever reason, they, they're estimating at a sixty to eighty, and I'm not sure that that's, that's realistic. I would think this is probably closer to twenty-four hours is what Lee Pack would have suggested, based on kind of the going legal rate, maybe you might say. So twenty-four hours is probably realistic, is my guess. You don't really know until you get in and you find out.
Have you ever did anything like this before?
Have I? No.
Negotiate?
No. At, at the county, Lee Pack did it for us. He negotiated on our behalf. They brought it forward to the commissioners as an agreed-upon deal, had to be ratified by the board, and we could shoot it down if you wanted to, but it was kind of a, you know, both sides kind of came together and decided this was the best possible outcome. So generally, it wasn't a whole lot of discussion, and we trusted the attorney in their, you know, good faith effort to negotiate, so.
But we don't have that option with the Lee Pack, you know, they're not available.
No, he's, he's extremely busy by the sounds of it, and...
So do we have anybody on staff that understands how to negotiate union that you know?
I'm not sure if Mike has worked, was negotiating in the past, I'm sure Jack was involved, and...
Because now, Mike, is he union?
No.
He's not?
No.
But I would think that he would have had something to do with it. Is that something that we can find out?
Yeah, I'm sure he was involved. I mean, this is, his, his work up here was the hourly rate and the hours, estimated hours, so he's basing that on something.
Sure.
A good guess, maybe, probably based on prior negotiations. But again, this is, I think the last negotiation was two or three years ago.
Okay.
Because you generally negotiate for longer than one year, and I don't know if they will. It all depends. If inflation comes down, they'll want to negotiate a long time. If inflation goes up, they'll want to negotiate a short time. So it's, it's, it's everybody's guess right now, and crystal ball as to what, what's going to happen.
Say, Matt, exactly who are we talking about here in the union?
Public Works. Public Works.
Public Works?
Yep. So eight members over there are in the union, and I think one, I'm sorry, one gentleman in the, I believe Steve is in a union as well, from, yeah, from Inspector.
Okay.
So it's, it's not, it's not like a lot of, you know, cities might have three or four unions, and, you know, it's a more drawn-out type of process.
But that percentage carries over to the rest of the personnel, too, don't it?
Generally speaking, it's, it's always the practice to replicate that so that you don't have one stronger versus the other, you know, making that argument, so generally that's the case. And I think in the, in the past, it's been very reasonable because inflation wasn't so much of an issue, but now that that long-term agreement is coming to an end, and you're seeing kind of some rather large increases out there, you know, it's going to be a challenging one. It definitely will be, so.
Because my thoughts are, too, is that, okay, Mike's been around a while, so he's seen the numbers, he knows how much they make per hour.
Yep.
And just from the history, say, back two or three years, whatever they're talking, you can kind of tell with the percentage and what's out there now. I don't personally know, but I'm thinking maybe Mike can be helpful at that.
You know, one of the things we would probably do is call around to different cities that may have settled their contracts already and kind of see what, what's been agreed to.
That's true.
Sometimes this all gets agreed to in the eleventh hour, so you don't have that ability to sample, you know, agreed-upon contracts. So that's in part, part of the challenge. Sometimes, you know, you're, like a Lee Pack, for example, kind of has connections out there and understands what, what people are going to be asking, and kind of gets a better, maybe, cliff note of what might be asked for before they even get into negotiations. If you're in the industry, you might, you might have that insight.
What union is it?
I do not have that, that information. Sorry. I'm not sure if it's...
I don't remember.
Ask me or not.
It would be good to know.
I don't think it's Local forty-nine.
No.
Generally, that, that's, that handles equipment operators, but...
Because I'm wondering also, like, if all the cities are pretty much the same union for their public works and stuff like that, I'm curious.
Probably depends on which unit, which union, you know, pursued them and locked them down.
How much time do we have to figure this out?
It expires into the year, so that's why we're kind of getting a jump on it, you know?
For budget reasons.
Yeah.
Okay.
Beginning of the year here, so. Get kind of the path to move forward, then we'll start scheduling the, the meetings and, and try and get it settled, so.
Yeah, personally, I would think that we should check into other cities, like you said, and just see what's out there, see if we can get some kind of a go, you know, go-by different cities.
So it's MNPEA, Minnesota Public Employees Association, is that what the A stands for? That's what they mean.
The chances are, like, probably, each city is probably...
What is it? What was it?
M-A.
MNPEA, so Minnesota Public Employee...
Association.
Might be association, I'm not sure what the A stands for.
Okay.
I've never worked with them before.
I don't know, but actually.
So consensus on staff?
Yes, for me.
Yes, for me?
Yes.
All right. Mayor?
Yep.
Okay. All right, we'll, we'll get things set up, get it rolling.
If you need any help, let me know.
Okay. All right, we'll get this out of here. Okay, Mr. Mayor and council members, the second item is the appointment of EDA members. We tabled this at the last council meeting to kind of bring it forward. There was some indication that the prior council may want to appoint council members to the EDA positions. We had our attorney do an analysis on that to see what, you know, what the law says, and if it allows for that, and in fact, it does. It just, you have to allow those appointments to run their course and expire before you can make that change, that rollover. So essentially, we have one person, we have, we have Councilmember Oracle who was serving on there, who vacated that being elected, and we have another individual, Tom, difficult last name to pronounce, to, to either be, he has an interest in being reappointed, or if your interest is in moving to council members, then, then, you know, you wouldn't reappoint at that point. So wanted to just bring this forward at a work meeting here so we can chat about it a little bit. If, if you have a desired consensus on moving forward on this, we can add it to tonight's agenda at the council meeting under Other, and, and make a motion on that. I will remind you that there are seven EDA members and five council members, so if you decide to go to council member EDA similar to the HRA, which is council members, then, then you'd be essentially reducing the size of your EDA from seven to five, and, and that operates very similar to the way this, this board here would. So according to Minnesota state statute, the EDA has quite a few powers, some of which are, you know, they can get into purchase agreements and sale of property and, and things of that nature, and if it's, if it's the will of this board, you can certainly look at it from a elected standpoint versus an appointed standpoint. That's, that's a decision you can do. Staff is okay either way.
I'm just going to say, I've been on the EDA for about a year now, and I haven't seen us do anything worth our time since I've been on for that year. We, we met three times in the first year, I missed one of those because I thought it was canceled, but anyways. And all they do is kind of what the council does, direct the city to do this, or direct the city to do that. They don't do any of the things on these lists, they, I haven't seen them do anything. Have they given a good idea here and there? Yes, but they can come to public forum and do that, you know? We don't have to pay people to, and take their time and energy to come to meetings that they don't... I don't even know why they're doing it, because it seems fruitless to me, so that's my opinion.
So what I will do is give you an example of what the city of Ramsey did. The city of Ramsey purchased that town center development and kind of gave it to the EDA to manage and sell and control and do that sort of work. The EDA there, because of, it was a hundred and fifty acres, you know, that they were getting market-ready and, and, you know, trying to make pad-ready for developers and that sort of thing, they're very busy there with, with that sort of project. A little different here, we don't, we don't have a town center type of project like that. There is not a whole lot of city-owned land that you can control, you know, or try and, try and sell or do a deal with. That's why, Councilmember Oracle, we didn't really want to meet for the sake of meeting. I mean, I'm sure everybody likes everybody, but everybody's got a life. So, so unless we had something pressing or required by law to meet for statutory reasons, we, you know, we didn't, we would cancel it at that point, so. So at any rate, we're trying to respect everyone's time in that, for that scheduling of meetings.
And that's appreciated, but the other, the little things, the few meetings we did have, that could have easily been done through this council or the council that was here at the time. It didn't require a whole nother evening, a whole nother evening of everybody else's time. It, it just didn't make a lot of sense. And as I was reading through this, they didn't, they didn't have the annual meeting, they didn't, they never did most of the stuff that was listed on here. And I watched Ramsey's EDA meetings, I went, they had a huge business plan, business development plan, I printed it out, it's about that thick, I mean, and they had some really good ideas in there that we could have gone and said, hey, do you think any of our businesses need this or need that? Because if Ramsey's do, maybe ours do. But they wanted to just start a whole new process, and, which didn't make sense because they did one a few years ago, so. So my opinion is, let's start filling it with council people, and I, I don't know if we need to make a, do a whole resolution to change it from seven to five like they did when they did it from five to seven, or, and then at the same time, make it counts, you know, a resolution to make it council members. I don't know what the procedure is for that, but, because I know they had two different public hearings, one to create it and one to change it from five to seven.
Mr. Chair and Councilmembers, what we can do is ask the attorney what his, what he would recommend for a process for transition, if you choose to go that route, and as far as changing bylaws, if that needs to be done, or whatever the case is. But, but essentially, just tonight, if you choose in the council meeting, under Other, you can just make a motion to transition at that point to, you know, council and staff, direct staff to take whatever steps necessary to get that done.
I, I don't know, I kind of disagree a little, because we're always asking the citizens and residents to participate in stuff in the city, and that keeps us transparent. I think we've already got two council members on there, and if these people enjoy doing it, I think we should enable them to do that. I mean, we've got the final say, no matter what, so putting, adding extra council members, there really ain't going to accomplish much more. I mean, we've already got the final say.
This is true, and, and I could almost agree with you if it would get changed up a little bit, but the people who have been on there have been on there, other than me, years and years, ten, twenty years. You know, it's not new people, where they're not new people coming to the meetings.
Yeah, I agree, kind of with what Suzanne's saying, too, because it's like, people have been on there for many years, and personally, I have not seen a lot of accomplished, myself. And it's just something that council, since we have to make the final decision, we might as well be part of the decision, so we don't have to go through somebody else and then bring it to us. I don't feel it's that big of a deal if we just deal with it ourselves.
Yeah, I think that's another benefit, it removes one more layer of the decision-making process.
So which way you guys want to move, then?
I think we should move to have council take over the EDA eventually.
I agree.
Do we need to make that motion?
We can.
No, no, you can add it, add it in the city council, under Other. And I, I'm just reading if this is two thousand eight, okay, this is the enabling resolution that essentially created the EDA and...
Correct.
Yeah. Doug's, Doug's cell, there we go. So we, we may need to come back with a secondary resolution, whatever the attorney recommends on that, we want to make sure we cross every T, dot every I, make sure it's good.
I know there'll have to be public hearings, at least one.
Probably, I would imagine.
So I will, I will look to you, then, to make that motion, to add that under the agenda, or just add it before the agenda's approved.
Add it under Other.
Yep. Okay. Safe and secure facility policy, we, I was asked to come up with a security policy under the prior council, let me just get to it here. Not sure what page that's on. Sorry about this, it's a long, long packet on this one. There we go. So we have a draft policy before you here, and just kind of dealing with kind of some of the city-owned facilities that we have, and if you've had a chance to read this, I know there were some concerns, perhaps about, you know, what can be allowed or should be allowed, unauthorized access, we have a new, we were going to have a new security system being installed in February here, they pushed us back to March, unfortunately for that, but that's coming on, online as well. So who gets the codes, you know, who can access facilities? If there's people that are in there that shouldn't normally be in there, then it kind of spells out, you know, an employee kind of, you know, bringing them through there, at least being with them, so that keep them safe and that sort of thing. Unlawful possession of or use of weapons, it kind of addresses some of that. There is, in this state, you know, you can, you're going to apply for a permit to carry, and that's a lawful use at that point, so that wouldn't apply. And it says, all those city cannot prohibit members of the public from possessing a weapon on public property, appropriate precautions can be taken, so it kind of identifies some of those things, emergency response, and, and that. And so this is kind of a first stab at a policy, we've never really had a security policy for city facilities, and, and I think we started kind of touching on this in the last council toward the end of the year, and we really didn't get it resolved. So wanted to bring it back, and if you guys are, have comments on this, if there's any changes that need to happen, or if you want to proceed with this, we can, we can certainly get this on a future council meeting and on the agenda, and, but just for this evening, just to talk it through and see if it's something you're interested in.
I think it's necessary. I was wondering if we wanted to add something regarding the accountability of property, you know, the more durable stuff, like the drills and the, I don't know if they have saws and, you know, electric equipment, iPads, and, you know, making sure people are keeping their doors locked if they're not in their office, because, you know, somebody could get in and, you know, get some information. I'm not, for offices, I'm not even worried about stuff, I'm worried about information.
Councilmember, I think that was one of the reasons why we kind of started looking at this, was kind of more of a HIPAA violation, you know, if you have a computer up, a screen, and, and personal information on there, and someone walks through that shouldn't have access to that, all of a sudden, now, your risk is, you know, you have, you have greater risk of, of, you know, someone bringing a claim against the city. And so that was kind of, I think, the genesis of some of that conversation. So, but there's obviously, we ended up begging, borrowing, and stealing from the city of Andover, who have implemented this, this one here. So cities often do that, where they, if somebody's already kind of ironed out some of the details, then we kind of work with cities to, to come up with one that fits for our city. But other cities have, like I say, Andover has this, other cities have similar ones that, that kind of goes into the employee handbook, employees are aware of what the expectations are, you know, there's no questions in at that point, so.
I think it looks pretty good, I read over it. It's unfortunate that now we live in a world that you have untrustworthy people, and that really sucks, but I understand that we need this, especially for like the HIPAA thing, give people's personal information, and they run out there and it's all over the internet and everything else, and so I agree with this, we've got to really tighten down everything.
We're going to have cards, your identification cards for accessing facilities, so it's kind of an important, it'll be a new, a new thing to get in versus a punch code on a door. It'll be a card that, you know, Councilmember Smith scans the card, goes in, there's a record then of Councilmember Smith going in at this time. So if it, if you need to, you know, keep track of that information, that information is there, but, but...
That can keep people...
If Councilmember Smith is in Colorado skiing, and all of a sudden, his card scans, you know you've got a problem, right? That sort of thing.
So is that going to be for just the main doors, or is it going to be for all the doors of all the buildings, or are we looking at certain buildings? What are we thinking?
No, we, we were given authorization to do the, the fire stations, the ice rink, Whispering Aspen, and this facility. So all of them are going to have the same one. What we had before was kind of a hodgepodge of cipher locks, keys, this one has key code, I mean, it was a kind of a laundry list of everything. I don't even think there is one up at, there's just a key up at Whispering Aspen at this point. But the new system, for example, we had a council member, a council meeting a few council meetings ago, where the Boy Scouts were going to be going into the Whispering Aspen facility, and they forgot their key. And we were all about ready, I mean, minutes from jumping into a meeting, so we had to literally have one, and I think Nate was sick at the time, he was down with a, with a flu or something that he was going through, so had to literally call a guy on overtime to go up there and, and, you know, unlock it. The new system, you'll be able to pull it up on your phone, hit the unlock button, and unlocks it for him right there. So it's really a slick system, and I think it's going to ultimately save, in this particular case, when a, when a person's called out on overtime, I think they have, they're paid for three hours, if I'm not mistaken. It's by agreement, and, and so it costs a significant amount of money. There was really no other option, we could do it, that we couldn't pause the council meeting and someone run up there quick. So the new system is going to be, is going to be convenient, all facilities will have the same one, it'll be a streamlined approach.
Nice.
And there'll be cameras as well, I know we just, I kind of informed you, we, we lost a dumpster here not too long ago. The new cameras will be able to help identify any sort of funny business like that that's going on, so. Helping, at least in the prosecution, it may not stop the crime, but it'll help in the prosecution side of it, so.
I think another big thing it's going to stop is... I think another big thing that's gonna stop is taking the liability off the city for unauthorized people just walking into a building because they have an old code or a buddy gave them a code or told them, meet them up there and some, some forth. You never know when them trucks are rolling out. It could be on the phone and these guys could be running in and running out, or it could have been just clean, floors wet, somebody slips, falls and hits their head and, and it's the city who's liable.
Number eight, Matt, why are we signaling out Fire Department Auxiliary? I mean, this is a volunteer support group for firefighters in residence. When house fires or weather incidents happen, they come out and bring food, coffee, blankets, all kinds of stuff. Why are we signaling them out in there when everything below here is set in the above paragraph anyway? Why does that even need to be in there?
Mr. Mayor, I, again, we, we copied this from Andover's and, and I think that, that the auxiliary kind of presents a quasi-scenario where you have volunteers accessing a facility maybe more than anyone else, right? For those specific events that you even mentioned. So I think that's why, you know, we really don't have that situation short of a facility being rented out somewhere else. Where we know who's gonna be in there and that sort of thing. I think this is, this is just an outlier in terms of, you know, I don't know, it's a, I don't, I can't think of another example where you might have a similar type of situation like this accessing a, a public facility on an ongoing basis. So again, again, this is, this is a document that's, I mean, nothing's cast in stone ever, right? I mean, in terms of policies. That if there's, if we come up with some other instance that needs to be kind of spelled out specifically so that there's understanding and clarity, we can certainly add to it and as we go along. And and this is just one of those instances. I don't think we're picking on the auxiliary. I, I think everyone appreciates the work that they do, so.
Definitely. The only thing is, is with the auxiliary, you can always have an active member there to open them, let them in anyways.
Right. No, I agree there.
Not a big deal. I mean, when I was in the Fire Department, our auxiliary were our wives. So I mean, we'd just open the door and let them in.
And then also on ten, B and C in front of nine one one, that should be active. It's active nine one one.
Oh, yeah.
Under C, you said?
B and C.
B and C.
Where the nine one one app is, that should be active nine one one.
Yep, we can make that change.
Okay.
If I can make it right now, I might be able to. Uh, this is a PDF.
It should be what? Active?
Active nine one one. That's what the app is called.
Oh, okay.
We'll make that change. Okay, so B and C, number ten.
I have a thing about ten B where it says should not. That's a little mushy. I think it should be will not, because should not isn't exactly saying you cannot. Should not is, you shouldn't do that. I know you're going to, but you shouldn't, you know?
I'm sorry, which one was that?
Ten B, where it says retired personnel should not have access to this app on their device. I think it should be will not, not should not.
Okay, right here you're saying will not have, okay.
Yes.
So it's ten.
Leaving it open to interpretation.
Okay, we can make that change. If you'd like. That, that was in response to the, the posting that happened on, on, on Facebook. Fortunately, there wasn't any personal information that was sent out on that one. But in the event that there was, then the city becomes liable at that point and again, kind of getting back to that release of non-public information accidentally. That if we can try and avoid it and write a policy around it, doesn't mean it'll, it will never happen, but at least a policy is in place to try and prevent it from happening, so.
All right, it looks good with the little changes that we had.
So you guys would like me to bring this back to a council meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
I'll bring it back with, with those changes and anything else that is decided on then or before it gets approved, so. All right. Okay, and Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, the last item in the, on the agenda this evening is dog licenses. And wanted to bring this forward. As indicated here, a growing number of cities in the metro area are starting to eliminate dog licenses. You know, there's it seems like some people charge for licenses and other people do not. And they're starting to get out of that business. Again, it's, it kind of puts a city on, on, at a, at a little bit of a risk that if you, if you, you know, haven't made sure that the dog that's licensed has got their rabies shot, you know, then, then they can point a finger at the city and that sort of thing. Most, most, and today, maybe different than many years ago, there's a, there's a very profitable business in, in your veterinary clinic. And they're constantly, they're constantly trying to get you to update your dog's rabies, for example, and every other shot that they give them. Or, you know, cats and all that sort of thing. So I think, I think when, when you, when you decide to be a dog owner, there's a certain amount of risk involved in that. If you decide that you want a pit bull or a German shepherd or a Doberman, you assume a little more risk, you know, than, than somebody with a shit soup perhaps. But, but the reality is, I think, if your dog bites somebody and you have not gotten a rabies shot for your dog, you're gonna be liable for that. And the, and the medical steps that are gonna need to be taken to ensure that the, the, the victim isn't, isn't gonna contract rabies at that point. So it really, I think the cities have kind of decided that it's, the onus should be on the owner. And that I think in our city, we have, Carrie might be able to correct me, but we don't have a hundred percent, you know, success rate in licensing. I would say it might be closer to thirty percent. But, but there's there's just a, this, this kind of this shift out there in cities where they're just kind of getting away from, from chasing it. Yes, Carrie. What, what is our percentage of success on that?
Um, I don't, sorry. I don't know that we necessarily have a percentage, but in two thousand ten, we would have, we'd be issuing almost four hundred dog licenses a year. In two thousand twenty-four, we issued eighty-one and we have a population of twelve, over twelve thousand people. So compliance is getting lower and lower, compliance rates. If, you know, it used to be that cities would have this ordinance in place to ensure rabies vaccinations and to ensure that a, a lost dog could be reclaimed by the owners. But now with social media and microchips, the dogs are getting back to their owners long before City Hall is even notified. And like with vaccinations, you know, it, people used to keep their dogs outside. They would sleep outside, be chained up or whatever. Now people have them sleeping in the same bed and, you know, the, we're really only getting the pet owners that are already taking care of their pets that are, we're really only, you know, not really penalizing them, but it's the pet owners that are already taking their dogs that are coming into license anyway. We don't charge for it, so buying the license tags is an expense that we don't get reimbursed for.
And we, we used to, but since we stopped, I, I think it's a total waste of city personnel time and money and and I'm sure it's time-consuming to be nagging all these people that come in.
Well, and we don't, we don't enforce it. I mean, we, we don't chase people down and if there is a dog bite incident, the deputies and the CSOs, they get the vaccination information directly from the owners. They don't contact the city for it. So it's almost like it's government oversight where there doesn't have to be.
It's a waste for the city to even deal with it. I mean, we're not liable for.
This policy's pretty old, ain't it?
Yes.
Yeah, see, this was back in the day when, once a year, the, they'd have a, one time a year, residents would come in here in the veterinary and give them shots.
Yep, we have the pet clinics. Yep.
That used to be years ago and they used to do that once a year.
We had the pet clinic, I believe, cause I used to have to do that. We had the pet clinic up until two thousand nineteen. And twenty twenty with COVID, we quit doing it cause the, the vet that helped us out with that was still willing to do it, but he had to have additional vet techs on staff to come and help. And the U of M did not want to have that staff come up here and be exposed during twenty twenty and it's just kind of fallen by the wayside.
Just with the numbers you said, like four hundred versus, no, like last year was eighty-four. So obviously, it's not that big a deal. So I'd say get rid of it.
Is there a situation where the city could become liable for something?
That would probably be a question for Eric. But, I mean, right now we're requiring it, we're not enforcing it.
And a lot of cities have gone away with it.
Yeah.
I, I was surprised that East Bethel had theirs and bigger cities did not have them.
There's a lot of larger cities that have done away with it years ago now, two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, so.
And right now we're doing tags for nothing, correct?
Correct. We don't charge for anything. The only thing we require is proof of vaccination.
I'd say goodbye. My opinion.
And there's, there's really only two places in our ordinance where it would have to be changed. It would be, I mean, it's in the same chapter under, I think it's chapter ten animals, but under the potentially dangerous dogs. And then we have another division that's under rabies control and it would just be tweaking those two spots.
So would we have to have a public hearing to eliminate this ordinance?
Correct.
Yes, okay.
Can you set that up?
Yep, if you want us to.
Yep, please.
Okay. I'll give you a quick story. Councilwoman Miller, you asked about city liability. There was, again, I, I rely back to the City Ramsey because I live there, but the, there was a loose dog and a lady called the police and the police was nearby, showed up and didn't have a restraining device for the dog. And said, I gotta go back to the police station and grab one. Went back to the police station and in the meanwhile, the lady let her son play with the dog, which proceeded to bite the, the child. And, and the city got sued. The city got sued for it. So you can sue a ham sandwich unfortunately in today's courts and, and so, yeah, I mean, I, I just think if we're, if we have a ordinance and, and it's, you know, kind of, kind of puts a city a, maybe a little bit more risk than, than if we didn't have one. Requiring people, so. All right, we'll get that on the, a future agenda. And we will go from there. Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie.
All right, I think those are four very quick items. Got them off the, off the books. Appreciate that. And we have about fifteen minutes before the council meeting. Do you wanna close the meeting?
We'll close the February tenth, two thousand twenty-five work meeting.